Let's continue. Before we discuss the motion, not related to the resolution, we heard the deputations talk about the Bible. Just like to respond, to have it on the record. Thank you, Chairman. Mr. Chung Hyung, he referred to the Matthew, the gospel of Matthew, and I responded. It's this day I refer to my motto. I do not intend to debate the Bible's interpretation. But I just want to point out that the Bible tells us not to criticize people. Okay, we'll deal with Mr. Lung Kai-chung's motion. Do you wish to speak? Other members also wish to speak, three minutes. Chairman, my motion is a very humble one. Let me read that. We urge the Development Secretary, Mr. Paul Chan, to disclose his personal interests in the new territories northeast and also disclose his spouse and relatives' interests, including the transfer of ownership records and the company shareholder information. Now, this morning, I had Chairman's permission to circulate a shareholding diagram. Now, this diagram isn't 100% accurate. The media have collected this information through different conduits. So my motion isn't a fishing expedition. I am just trying to illustrate that there are five BVI foreign registered companies. The BVI company law doesn't require the shareholders' names disclosed. So these are secret, confidential. So if Mr. Chan does not voluntarily disclose this information or his wife doesn't disclose this information, the Legislative Council and the Hong Kong public will not know who the individual shareholders are in these offshore companies. So I'd like, I'm not saying you should break the law, but after you receive the agreement or the permission, you could disclose all the transfer records, shareholder information. And after we have read the information, we can come to a judgment on whether what you've said is true or not. So before we ask you to step down, you should have done this. And on the last occasion in the subdivided unit issue, we gave you this opportunity. We now have Lo Wei-gong, Chen Wei-yi, Chen Ga-lo, Emily Lau, Chen Kin-bo, Fernando Jung, who wish to speak? Six. Three minutes? Mr. Lo Wei-gong. Mr. Lung Kai-chung's motion requires the relatives to disclose property information. So this disclosure scope is wider. So how does he define relatives? Usually relatives. So would that requirement be beyond normal requirements? So I don't agree with that, this motion. And Mr. Paul Chan had also disclosed a lot of related information, including Orient Express and the farmland in Kudong details had been disclosed. So he's doing this work. And I feel Mr. Lung Kai-chung requiring further disclosure, I think this goes beyond our normal requirement. So I don't agree with this. Mr. Albert Chan? The last two terms of government, we've seen a lot of officials present themselves as devout churchgoers. Mr. Donald Zhang had stepped down with cases of Maotai. And we see a lot of senior citizens who will be relocated in these projects. So could they refrain from using the Almighty God to cover their unsightly behavior? This is what devout churchgoers do. They, same with the 19 secretary, drunk driving secretary. Mr. Abraham Shaq, you are the real estate representative. You don't need to interfere. Mr. Albert Chan? These are two separate issues. I'd like, they should respect the CE, their religion. Please do not criticize people of their faith. They are using their faith to cover their tracks. That's why freedom of speech. Abraham Shaq, you are the real estate constituency representative. Abraham Shaq is a believer of the faith. Chairman, on the matter of disclosure, I've met with low-ranking civil servants. A police officer told me that a policeman's spouse, if they want to open a bar, the wife is not a police officer. They need to declare that. If it is not declared to the police, it is a disciplinary issue. So just a police officer, not a senior officer. They need to declare. Now, the secretary has made a profit of 19 times profit. You, okay, your time's up. Next, Ms. Emily Lau? I support Mr. Lung Kai-chung's motion because the administration understands that disclosure by ex-co-members and officials is a matter of concern for the public. We have Mr. Eddie Ng also, who forgot to disclose. So this is, so Chairman, if you see the shareholding chart, we have some 11 companies here. And these companies, we're not aware of what's going on in these companies.
And people may ask, a politically appointed official, how much he has to hide away from the public? So we should urge the secretary to come clean on everything. And even when your wife issued a statement, she issued it one statement after another statement after another statement. Why couldn't you disclose everything at one go? And actually, a lot of us don't believe that you should hold on to your position. But as long as you're still in your post, you should come clean and devout everything. So we hope that the secretary will also support this motion to provide all the information we request. And in the community, people are also calling for a tightening of the interest declaration system while covering information of the senior government officials' relatives as well. So we might have to give opinions on that front soon, too. So the CE also said that the secretary has done everything that is required. But, well, in that case, you've done extra things on top of the system. Why did you do that last October? And people were saying that a lot of information now is still, remains hidden from us. So we are very upset. The whole community is upset. So our request is that you disclose all information at one go. So I hope that the secretary, you yourself, will also support the motion. If there is anything else that you think we should know, please also add that in as well. Dr. Kenneth Chan? And I agree, and I hope that you will support the motion of Mr. Kenneth Lung. I think the secretary is stirring up the troubles himself. We are not a court here, but we attach a lot of importance to the integrity of the politically appointed officials. Should they be whiter than white? When Mr. Paul Chan was the electrical member, he was also adamant that the declaration of interest should be sound and good. Now, if he sold off the shares last October, why didn't he disclose that at that time? We should follow up on the matter, and why? Well, the pro-establishment camp said that we should not be asking for information on the relatives as well. But the fact is that the holding of shares among these companies involve not only Mr. Paul Chan, his wife, and his son, and his in-laws, but a lot of other people, too. So that's why Mr. Lung tabled a motion covering the relatives as well. And Mr. Paul Chan and his wife and his family relatives are also disclosing information on the relatives' interest in the matter, day after day. So it's they themselves who are telling us that many relatives are involved. So there is a lot of room for improvement in the interest declaration system. The relatives may have an interest in the business supervised by the relevant government officials. For example, in the energy-saving bulbs incident, involved the in-laws as well of Donald Zhang. So I think this kind of interest declaration system needs further study. But there may be good things coming out of this saga because the system may be improved in the future. Now, at this day and age, and these kinds of companies registered in the British Virgin Islands, they are sound, they are so secretive and mysterious to us. They may use these overseas companies to hold interest in the land in NENT. So we have to be very thorough in our investigation. And if the secretary doesn't want to step down, and we have no other way to resolve the matter but to follow up on investigating the case. Mr. Chan Kim-po? I think Mr. Paul Chan has done what is required of him as an ex-co-member and a senior government show as far as the declaration of interest is concerned. If there is a loophole to this system, then that should be improved. And we should not be drawing up our own standards ourselves. And I don't think it's fair. The land was purchased 10 years ago. And in October last year, he did something, and he sold out the shares. And if you don't think that was not sufficient, we should be drawing up clearer standards. We shouldn't be implementing all these new standards with retrospective effect. You should not draw up your own standards and impose them on others. Then we would not be having a common recognized set of standards if we do that. Now, as for Mr. Lung's motion, I don't think there is any problem. He has also talked to us. He said that it covers himself, the spouse, and the relatives. And it's not the family members, but rather relatives. What is the definition of relatives? Nothing's said here. And you can cover a very wide scope. And then the secretary may fall into this trap whereby the scope of the relatives may expand and expand. So if Mr. Lung can delete the word relatives, then I would be supporting the motion. If otherwise, I would not be, I would be against it. Mr. Abraham Shaq? Oh, Dr. Fernando Jung first, sorry. Thank you, Chairman. Netzens said that department stores are conducting a lot drawing, lucky draws. And they would have this condition that the employees and their relatives would not be allowed to participate in the lucky draws. Now, we're talking about a secretary here, a principal politically appointed official. Our motion here covers he himself, his spouse, and his relatives. The, we require that their ownership of properties and land, information on this be disclosed. Mr. Lo Wei-gong? Well, can we clarify which motion we're talking about? We're talking about this one, yes? He himself, his spouse, and relatives. Well, if there is another one on family members, please make it clear. We are talking about this particular motion where the word relatives is included. Mr. Lung said that he is willing to change the word from relatives to family members. Well, I have heard this very clear. The motion mover said that he's willing to change the word. Well, let's see how everyone will vote. Dr. Fernando Jung, please hold on. Please don't direct, members don't talk directly among yourselves. Yes, Dr. Fernando Jung, please carry on. This diagram is so very complicated. A professional, especially a professional accountant, your mission is really to, as far as the accounts and the management of companies are concerned, is to present the accounts very clearly so that there will be good monitoring of these companies' operations. But among these 11 companies, five of them are registered overseas. Why registration overseas? Is it, does it, do they want to evade tax responsibility? Do they want to remain hidden in a way? Why are you playing with these financial tactics? Do you use this kind of professional knowledge to get some benefits yourself? Or are you trying to use your professional knowledge to help our society to become more just and fair and open? So regrettably, Mr. Paul Chan, your performance so far today, as far as your professional ethics is concerned, your professional ethics should be straightforward and so on. I don't see any of that kind of spirit in you today. Next one, Abraham Shaq, Chairman. I want to ask the legal advisor for this panel meeting. Can we vote on this motion? This special meeting is on the topic of NENT development. But then Mr. Lung, Kenneth Lung's motion is about the Paul Chan's integrity, company interest, and so on. If members would like to find out more in this aspect, they can do it in the House meeting. I think that's a more appropriate platform. And I think we should also give, we should also give an opportunity for the secretary to clarify this diagram. This diagram has already been published in the newspaper today. Mr. Shaq? This motion, I ruled yesterday that this is directly related to the NENT development plan. Yes, I know that, I understand that. But the question is, we can consider again whether this motion is related to what we're discussing today. Well, you've made a ruling once. It doesn't mean that you can't make a second ruling. Mr. Shaq? If you suggest that we should seek legal advice, you can do that later. If we don't need to vote on this motion, perhaps we will invite the secretary to explain this diagram, published in the Economic Journal today. Sorry, speaker not coming through. Well, that diagram is for members' reference only. The motion here is in this paper. Well, if there is a second ruling, then I'll ask for a third ruling, Chairman. Any other members wishing to speak? Dr. En Jung, Chairman? I have reservation on this, especially the last sentence. Mr. Paul Chan should disclose the interest of he himself, his spouse, spouse, and family members in, on his interest, on the properties and the land in the NT, NE development area. I support that. But as for the identity of the shareholders of the relevant companies, I have reservation on that. Perhaps Mr. Paul Chan has partnered with his friends in such companies. And if we ask Mr. Paul Chan to disclose information in that regard, then he might have to give information on the identity of the third party or the fourth party, and so on. Should we be more prudent on this? Any other members wishing to speak?
Lung Kai-chung? Mr. Lung Kai-chung, I agree modifying "親屬" to "家族". I'd just like to make that amendment. Thank you. And do you have any comments on Ms. Jung's question? I need to explain. If you say unrelated people cannot be disclosed, then I still don't know who your shareholders are. There has to be 100% shareholdings. If you're saying 70% cannot be disclosed, then how do I know what's behind the 70%? It's still a black hole. If you're saying they're not related and they cannot be disclosed, then there is this black hole. My motion is related to the Northeast New Development Plan. I'm not stating, I'm not asking for all information. I've already narrowed it down sufficiently. Okay? Everybody has spoken. Mr. Chan, any response? Secretary? The time referred to in the motion, what timeframe does it refer to? It's not stated here. Any supplement, Secretary? I'm just questioning whether it's feasible. So let's put Mr. Lung Kai-chung, we change the wording of "親屬" to "家族". Could you, do you need to go through the wording? Do we need, do we need the Chinese word "K"? It doesn't matter. Or if you want to ask whether my children, you just say "children". Well, as Mr. Fernando Jung said, under common law, we have definitions, we have of family. And so I don't need further explanation. I hope Chairman can start the vote. That's not fair, Chairman. You have to set the scope of family. We need to vote. And Mr. Lung Kai-chung has some wording. And we've heard the different interpretation. We also mentioned the issue of time. We can let the legislators decide whether they agree on the wording. I'm happy he's changed it to "家族", but I'm not satisfied with the other part of other shareholders. So...
you can decide on the motion yourself. So let's put it to the vote. Those in favor, please raise your hands. Let's read out the names. Emily Lau, Sid Ho, Fernando Zhang, Leng Ge-Cheng, Albert Chan, Fan Gao-Wai, Chen Ga-Lung, in favor. Those against, please raise your hand. Zhang Lai-Hwan, Yip Gok-Him, Chen Jian-Bao, Luo Wei-Guo, Regina Yip, Abraham Shaq, Michael Tian, against. Those in favor, there are seven, and seven against. So according to rules of procedure, this will not be endorsed. Motion not endorsed. AOB, if we don't have AOB, we adjourn the meeting.